Any long? I might fold it.
Here. We'll go right on to the consent agenda while those guys are figuring out what's going on. So we would be looking for a motion, please.
The board approved the minutes of the November 27, 2017 Board of Education meeting, the financial report for November 2017, checks number eight to nine, seven to eight, the eight date in the amount of $130,797.24. ACH number one, seven, one, eight, zero, zero, five, four, eight to one, seven, one, eight, zero, zero, six, five, seven in the amount of $302,940.85 and a wire transfer in the amount of $17,631.10 for a total of $451,350.19.
Second. I have a motion from Dr. Deep, second from Mr. Pyatt. Any questions on any of the documents? I assume everybody has had an opportunity to look at them. Here you have the, ah, let's roll call them.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Noel Deep?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
JD Schrader?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Mike Boldig?
Yes.
Thanks very much. Ah, public conference. Nobody listening. Wonderful. We don't go to the, yeah, evaporate this thing. Screwed up last call. So, what's going on, guys?
Um, in the last three weeks, not a lot has happened in school, but we have two wrestlers that are ranked in the top ten for E1 in the state of Wisconsin, so it's cool. Otherwise, I just wanna, we have a kudos to Mr. Lewandowski, because he's a really good teacher in terms of just, like, if you look at it from your guy's standpoint of view of, you know, the difficulty of material that he teaches and how he teaches every student. Worth of recognition, right?
Great.
Right now, during my watches or at any time, we're copping money for the celebration already. And we also have a community in the great society.
The two wrestlers. Did you have their names switched?
Yeah. Colin Eldridge, he wrestles, uh, one, one eighty-two, and that's the man who wrestles, I think, one thirty-two. He wrestles in other ways. I don't wrestle, but are student reps allowed to complain about things too, or only tell us good things? Because I've never heard him complain yet. I just haven't.
Well, apparently, then, we must be doing a wonderful job if they're not complaining.
Yep, I'm not doing a wonderful job. They're quiet now.
Well, thanks, guys. It's excellent news.
Thank you.
It's good stuff. Getting ready for the end of the week. Time long, relax, kick back, irritate your parents. Got you. All right, thank you. Any questions in the board ask for student reps? No? Cool. Good, thank you. Uh, let's go on to new business. Committee of the whole, be looking for a motion to approve minutes.
I move for approved minutes from the committee of the whole meeting on date of November 14, 2017.
Second.
Already got one to my, right here. We have motion from Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Mead. Teach you to, sorry. Uh, you were all there, so any questions, comments, anything else? It was a rather quick meet, to say the least.
Also, did.
Yep, a lot of it got, because some other situations ran a little long, I will say that we tabled a bunch of stuff till next month because, so. Since there is no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Forecast Five Analytics and the Budget Forecast, brought you guys back into the room.
To work as tour of your high school.
So, Mike, we've got Pete Grunder here with Forecast Five. We've done this kind of as the start of our budget planning for next school year. And Pete and I have made some assumptions on possibilities of what we might be looking at for additional expenditures next year. And Pete will just run through some of the model and some of the basic assumptions, and then we have the ability to just tweak it to whatever the board would like to see.
All right, thanks. Should I be there?
Sure. And if you have questions for either Peter or myself, feel free to ask away.
Board members, if you want to sit out there to review this, that's fine. You got it up on your PCs, and you wanted to stay here, that's cool.
Well, first things first, I want to thank everyone for helping to solve the little issue that we had here, and, except for, it was a nice tour, and it's a really nice-looking library you have.
Right, right there next door.
So, thanks for letting me come here tonight. As Tim was saying, my name is Pete Grunder, I work for Forecast Five Analytics. I've been there for about a year and a half. Prior to that, I worked as a school business manager in Deerfield, which has about 800 kids in there. But then, prior to that, I spent three years as the comptroller for Janesville, which has about 10,000 kids. So I've been in a really big district, and I've been in a really small district, and I'm still waiting to see whether which district, but I don't think they exist. Anyway, as Tim was saying, we set up some scenarios here, and we're gonna just go through on how this works. So I will head down to the slide two here. And Forecast Five has a lot of different products, so we have five different products, actually. And we're gonna go over one of them in detail tonight called FiveCast, but that is a budget projection tool. There's another one called FiveSite, which allows you to do some comparable analytics between other districts. We're just gonna touch on that just a real little bit. We're gonna spend most of our time looking for budget projection tonight. So our FiveCast software allows the development of a multi-year financial plan. This year, it's a five-year forecast. The neat thing about it is it allows you to do scenario comparisons and what-if analysis. Meaning, like, okay, well, what if we think the property value is gonna go up really high, or if it's gonna go low, or if the governor's throwing more money into the budget, you know, what do we think is going to happen there? Our tool allows us to see what happens, as those results. As a business manager, I think Tim's best friend would be number four up there, because we can do the entire budget within FiveCast and upload it directly into the software, so it saves a lot of time that way. And finally, the last step on here is, like I said before, is you can use data and analysis from FiveSite to compare it to other districts. So if we, um...
Pete, before you run, is this hard for anybody back there to see? Because if it is, we can turn on some lights here and whatever. Just wanna make sure everybody's seeing it okay. Sorry.
Can everyone hear me? I know it's being recorded there, I don't know if there's a microphone that needs to be around, or other school boards have been around, but whatever you need to talk. So I'm just gonna go to the fourth slide here and talk about some of the elements that go into FiveCast, when we're trying to determine how we're going to set up a long-term financial forecast for our district. We're gonna start off with, at the top there, we look at the general ledger data for the last five years. So we have all of the data that passed through the ledger for every journal, and we have all of that information. We also have the current year budget, and we use that current year budget as how we're going to set the majority of our projections, and I'll show you, or talk about that in just a little bit. We do use calculators for some of the more complicated calculations, like I was talking about before, for property value changes. You don't know exactly what that's going to do to the tax levy, so you can't necessarily make that change, whereas we're looking at something like utility bills, if you wanted to say that it's a three percent increase, it's a pretty simple calculation. You can do that with the FiveCast, the regular FiveCast, in a case where the more complicated information comes in there, we have to use the calculators. Those calculators can also be used to project future enrollment, so you can look at the past trends of enrollment and see how you're doing for enrollment and what it's going to look like in the future based off of cohort survival method. We'd use that to convert to membership, so we know what the revenue limit forecast will look like in future years. We also, using this information, we will know what the equalization aid is going to look like. We're basically, we'll know what our factors are coming into this model, and once we input these models, or, sorry, these assumptions into the model, we'll know what the state aid and revenue limited tax levy are going to look like. As I was saying earlier, the other assumptions are based on percentage increase. You can do that as a regular percentage increase, or you can put in a whole dollar amount to say, I think we need to increase this by $50,000 for one time, or you can have it a recurring amount to go $50,000 for every year. And as Tim was saying, all of these assumptions came from, Tim and I, were all provided by the district. Head down to the next page. And some of the assumptions that we have here, and I'm gonna show you some charts coming up here in a little second, it's gonna back up some of this data. At the very top, there's declining enrollment trend. I don't think anyone in this room probably doesn't realize that the enrollment here has been declining, and I'm gonna show you some of the charts on that here, too. Your equalized property value is also growing slightly lower than the state average. On the next slide, I'm gonna show you a comparison between the two, and you'll be able to see that. These next two bullet points, the no per pupil revenue limit increase and the per pupil categorical aid increase, I want to talk about those for a little bit, because in FiveCast, what we do is we pre-populate a lot of these assumptions, and we pre-populate some of these assumptions based off of what we know in the state law, because the budget, when that was just passed, we know what that is, but then there's other factors out there that we don't really know. So what we do is we have a committee of five business managers throughout the state and a few folks from Forecast Five, we get together and we talk about what we think is going to happen in the future of finance law, along with the future of some of the variables that go into these calculations, like property value and spending and total number of students throughout the state. So we get together a few times a year, and we just talk about that, and if anyone had heard anything different of what's coming out of Madison, we apply that to there. Now, the reason I'm bringing that up now is because a couple slides from now, we're gonna be talking about this, it's called statewide calculator committee, and some of our assumptions that have come in, and some of our, these assumptions we have are the no per pupil revenue limit increase, and we're holding at the 204 categorical aid increase. I'll show you a slide on that, and hopefully it'll make a little sense.
Pete, let me catch the next couple of points. So, and Pete's gonna talk about the 2.5 percent, he's gonna talk about staff salaries in a future slide, but I thought we would start the discussion is with just a what-if. What if we gave teachers 2.5 percent increase and the rest of the staff 2%? And it's just a number at this point, and essentially what we're doing is we're looking at, we have a code for, we call it an expense object for salaries, and we have those expense objects by employee type, and we're just hitting that with a 2.5 percent for all teachers and a 2% for the rest of the employees. And it's just a real quick and starting point for discussion purposes. And when we get to the end of the slideshow, you'll see where the impact and what that percentage costs. The next bullet is health insurance. We know that we've had a really, our experience over the last five or six years has been very good with health insurance. In fact, we've had either a zero or negative increase over the last five years. What our health insurance providers are telling us is that health insurance, and I'm sure that the two board members know firsthand, is increasing at, the cost is increasing at a rate of seven or eight percent annually. So they're suggesting for us, they're seeing industry averages of that 3% to 5%. And if you start plugging, you know, in our experience mod is gonna be low, so we should be able to beat that percentage. But when you, when you look at health insurance, and it, it's approximately $3 million on our budget, and if you start increasing that at 5% on an annual basis, pretty soon it starts eating up everything. So for the model, I'm saying, okay, we could anticipate up to 5% next fiscal year and 3% after. We also know, on the next bullet, that we've got really good experience with the HRA, and that portion, where actually our utilization is somewhere in the neighborhood of 65% to 70%. So at some, I'm anticipating that we will be able to make a decrease in the HSA contribution over time, because I think we're just doing a really good job with the way we utilize health insurance. So we're, we know that we're slightly overfunded now, and I'm thinking we can bring that, that portion of liability down. The next piece is a little more complicated, and depending on what happens with the Affordable Care Act, we know that we're gonna be, for the next fiscal year, the deductible set by the Affordable Care Act is gonna go up by $100. And I'm just saying, what if the district contributes that additional $100 towards the HSA contribution, and that's a 7%, 7% increase? So, and then we would hold off for a year or two, and then we're gonna have to add probably another $100, and I'm just projecting that out, and that's what you see. And then the rest of them are pretty straightforward there, just a reasonable 2% on the utilities, and then we've got a 2% contract built into transportation. And there's no other increase in this projection, so we're not giving building budgets any more money or anything of that in this projection.
Is it, Tim, is this assuming we spent $600,000 out to other elementary schools?
Um, we'll get into that.
Okay. So what are the primary revenue drivers? So the first one, as most of you probably know, is enrollment. And as I touched on earlier, your district here is experiencing declining enrollment. You can see an 11-year chart up there with the current year and five years of history and five years of projected enrollment of where we, where we think it's going to be. One thing I want to point out is, everything we do in FiveCast, when we call something 2018, it means the year 17, the fiscal year 1718. So when we're looking at this and you see that one that says 2018, that was the September count that we've just had, so it's for that fiscal year. So it's just the, just the way it's labeled right there. So as you can see, it's, it is going to be decreasing over the next few years, just based off of past trends. That doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen, people could move in, but based off the past trends, it looks like it is decreasing. This is past trend trends, or you take voucher schools into the future trends, if you're confident in future trend? Well, in this case, what we're just doing is we're looking at the, like, the number of fourth graders that became fifth graders for probably, I think we use the five-year cohort survival method. So we looked at like a spread of five years to see what percentage of these students made it to the next grade, or, I'm sorry, we're still in the district at the next grade, and we apply that ratio going forward. So now, as the new voucher students are coming in here, because we just had the big voucher student hit you recently, that would be in your kind of minimal league, because we're spreading this over five years. Okay.
Andy, what we're doing, Cindy and I met, and we're really looking at like historical 4K registration, and we're looking at that 4K registration and saying, what's it gonna be going for the next five years? And we know that we've had some, I don't know if I want to call them anomalies, but we've had some, last year's live birth, when we did, when we looked at the library census data, that was up pretty high than the normal. But we haven't taken that into account. We're projecting about 140 kids, I think, entering 4K, and then we go to approximately 145, 150 in kindergarten. So we really, I mean, we've only got one year really in there with vouchers, so it's very minimal impact on the rate of decline.
Okay. The next revenue driver is the property evaluation. Now, the lower chart on here, there's three columns, and there obviously you can see the left column is the fiscal year, and what we have here is a comparison of, the middle column shows what the state has been overall, so collectively property value this last year went up 2.845% for all the districts in the state. Now, Antigo's, if you look over there, that's in the other column, that's the 1.812. So as you're looking at this and you look at the last few years, you can see that your property valuation, it has been going up, with the exception of a couple of years ago, it's been going up, but a little less than the state. However, a few years prior to that, you were, the state had gone down, and you guys were increasing at that time. Now, the reason we bring this up is if you look at the future years and what we are projecting for the state, statewide calculator committee thought, okay, we're gonna plug in 2.5% for all of the districts in the state. Why is that important now? Because that is important, because as we're trying to figure out how DPI is going to allocate out the $4.5 billion of equalization aid, we need to know how property values are going to be increasing, so that 2.5% is going into the equalized aid calculation in the future. Now, in the case here of Antigo, we thought, okay, well, it is always going a little bit less than, than the average, so we put it in as a 2% increase in the future.
In real simple terms, what is Antigo, what's the property value of Antigo gonna be relative to the state? And if we look poor historically, we're gonna end up probably getting a little bit higher increase in general aid. And that, that would mean then proportionately your property taxes would be going down. So it's, it's kind of a crucial point if we're either richer or poorer relative to the state. If we're richer, our taxes are going higher at a faster rate than the state's, and if we're poorer, they're, they're not going high as fast, so it enters into the model.
In the property wealthy districts usually get less.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you. And I'll head to the next slide here. And on this slide, we have two different tables, and these, this is the, the table on the left is the per pupil categorical aid, and the one on the right is the per pupil revenue level increase. The fact that they throw both of them in the, with the name per pupil, it always gets kind of, kind of confusing to folks. But the table on the right, for those that have been on the board for a while or have been in school districts that might remember back in, back in the day, the, the left column of the right table would have been showing like $250, $275 per year, was basically tied to inflation, and it was going up pretty consistently for all those years, until it got closer to 2010, and then Act 10 came along, and everybody went down by 5.5%. So that was a pretty big drop. So if we had an extra year up on top here, you'd see probably like a $500 drop in that year. I don't know exactly what it was branded, Tim might know. But you'll notice that the columns in that table, or, sorry, the numbers on that right table are pretty small, and all of them are being shifted over here to this table for the per pupil categorical aid. Now, the per pupil categorical aid is, that is aid that is given to school districts just based off of the number of students they have. Revenue limit per pupil one is based off of, it goes into the revenue limit, so that means there would be equalization aid and tax levy implications on that. So districts that were poorer would rather see the money going into the revenue limit side, because they're gonna be getting more aid that way, is the way that that would work out. So there is a shifting of that. As you can see, the table on the right is so much, it's got some smaller increases than what you see over here on the left. Now, the per pupil categorical aid committee, I'm sorry, the per, the statewide calculator committee, the last one I, I was thinking there, we were talking about this and trying to think, okay, so what's gonna happen in the next few years for state finance? You know, what do we think is gonna happen? And a bunch of us have been at a, at a speech given by the lobbyist for Wasbo and Wazda, his name's John Forrester, and he was talking about how in a year and a half, and they're going back to the budgeting table, it's going to be a very uphill battle. Now, because of that uphill battle, we were thinking, okay, we're not gonna add any more money into our, our amounts here. A district can, if you think something is going to go up a certain amount, we can put that in here, but statewide calculator committee determined, okay, we're not, we're not gonna put extra money into any of these calculations going forward. So that's why you can see the $630 being flat and the $0 being flat for the next few years.
And Pete, the 630 is statute right now, correct?
Yes, yes, the 630 is statute. The next year, it, the statute says 654, and then in the years after that, it drops down to 630, and it'll stay at 630 until the next budget comes up. All right. Is that a weird thing, talking toward a drop like that? Is that... I, honestly, I think it's all kind of weird. Just the fact, how it's going over to this table as opposed to that table. But yeah, I think it's kind of strange, and there was some rationale where that $24 came from, from the first proposed budget, and it had something to do with, remember when the first budget came out to say that all districts had to be at 12.5% health insurance? If you didn't have the 12.5%, you were gonna lose a certain amount, and if the state switched to the self-funding, the extra $24 would have come from there, and I've noticed that that's the $24 change in there, too. So I'm wondering if that was just a residual amount that was put through there. A lot of the districts that I'm working with seem to think something will come in, won't be, might not be a lot of money, maybe $100 will come in on one of these sides. We don't know exactly where, but they think something, they're being a little optimistic. I guess the folks at Forecast Five aren't as optimistic.
Forecast Five is in the lightest state trade department of the field.
Yes. Or someone kind of, or, exactly. Okay. So as we make all of these assumptions and put them into the software, we get some results. Now, the top table up there shows the maximum revenue limit. What the maximum revenue limit is, is the amount of money that you can bring in between the equalization aid and the tax levy. So basically, the revenue limit minus whatever they tell you the tax levy is, I'm sorry, whatever they tell you the equalization aid amount is, becomes your tax levy. So as you can see, over the next five years, it's projected to be decreasing. Now, the main point of that, and there's gonna be a slide on this a little later, too, is it's gonna be the declining enrollment is what is shrinking your revenue limit increase. Now, there's a lot of small numbers here on the bottom of the slide, and what this slide is talking about is the equalization aid amounts for the next five years, based off the assumptions we put in there where we think funding is going, what your aid is going to look like, will be that, you know, almost a third from the bottom row, the total aid amount there, so you can see the change per year based off of what we're putting in here. Now, we did put in an extra, well, we put in the $72 million that's in the statute for going into the equalization aid amount for next year, but we also put in $43 million for the next four years, just in case we increase in shared costs. We do think they're gonna put a little bit of money into the aid pot, but we just, it's not very much, so I was not scheming things. And of course, the tax levy. The top line there shows the five years of history and the current tax levy, along with the projected total levy, so this is all funds levy, and you can see that it is decreasing each year. The next section is the property valuation, so you can see where we put in the 2, or, sorry, the 2% increase for the property value. And then the mill rate is basically your tax levy divided by your property valuation times 1,000 to get your mill rate. So you can see, based off of what we're putting in here, the way things are going, it's, it's like you're going, it's dropping quite a bit, but that's coming from a decreasing revenue Now I'm gonna switch over to some of our FiveSite data. Like we were saying before, FiveSite data allows you to make comparisons between your district and any other group you want in the state, or however many you want to see at a time. And it's not just financial reasons, too. You can look at test scores, you can look at property value, you can look at teacher-pupil ratio, you can see all of that data through FiveSite. And I have a couple slides here, and one's gonna be on salaries, the other one's gonna be on health insurance. So you can see the history for the change in salaries up there at the top. I want to make a note on this and say, 2013 wasn't actually 0%, but I only have five years of data in FiveCast, so it just defaulted in 0 because it couldn't figure out the difference for us, so it wasn't exactly 0% at all. But, yeah, you can see what we've put in there for projections, and for the 2.5% for the teachers and the 2% for all the other employee groups, that adds out at 2.07% for the first couple of years, then gets up to 2.09. Now, the middle chart, this allows you to... Now, the middle chart, this allows you to do the comparable salaries between all of the school districts that we set up as this peer group right here. So you can see where Antigo is sitting. Now, okay, I can use my mouse here. In the middle chart there, you can see the three years, the vertical line you see there is the median salary. So that gives you, it's not exactly the, I guess it is the salary point that's in the middle of all this. And the big blue ball is where Antigo is sitting. So you're right out about the median salary for this group, and that's based off of a per pupil basis. Now, as we go down to the bottom chart.
That salary percent increase?
That is salary. That's flat out salary, whatever your salary, the district spent on salaries last year compared to all these other districts what they spent on salaries for last year. I should actually say two years ago because the.
Divided by enrollment.
Where the two at the very last, where the P is?
I don't remember. I could bring it up, and right now, this is just a picture of it, so I can't cover over it to see. I thought Norland Pines and Lakeland were on the far right of it because I saw those guys, and then who's that? But I don't remember who's on the lower. I can look that up if we, if I have a Five Site computer. The chart on the bottom, that's our standard deviation report. So what this list is, it has all of the, it groups all of the salaries for the, for this peer group. And it calculates the standard deviation and where Antigo is sitting in relation to standard deviation from that. Now, I don't remember exactly all of my stuff from statistics, but I just know the standard deviation just talks about how wide the spread is, memory serves. I think so. So as you can see, you're a little on the lower half of the standard deviation from the mean, so not the median. So in this case, typically, you know, you're just a little bit above the median salary, but you're below standard deviations on the mean. So typically, I think they'd both be on the same side, or, you know, in this case, they're not necessarily on that side. So you can see where Antigo is, the right blue ball down there. So now, for health insurance, we can take a peek at here. And once again, this groups in all of the health insurance. So this includes anything in the 240 objects. So that includes medical, that includes dental, that would include any amounts paid for the HRA or the HSA. Anything within the 240s are in here. So you can see that last year, 2016, 17, your health insurance, in fact, all these years, it keeps on going down. That's impressive. So the fact that it has the decrease, you know, I think it's almost getting evidenced there by that second chart too, because it seems like the ball's getting closer to the median salary. You know, maybe not so much in 2015. But I'm thinking with that big 12% drop, when we finally are able to get the 2016-17 data put in here, that ball's going to be closer to that vertical bar just because of the way the salaries are dropping. The data is on DPI's website, and our Five Site folks are, they have it in the queue for one of the main projects that they're working on right now. So hopefully, that'll be up very soon. So the outlier identification report, you can see where you are in comparison to the, comparison to the group for your standard deviation right here. And Tim and I were talking about earlier, the denominator in this case is actually headcount. So this isn't the revenue limit FTE, this isn't the membership piece, this is the amount of kids that are in here. That's what Five Site is typically using for their, for their calculations. Okay, so declining enrollment, that is what's causing the big change here. We talked about that earlier, and unfortunately, there isn't really a lot we can do about that, but we can see the breakdown, how that's changing the revenue limit each year, or how it's projected to change the revenue limit for the next five years. You can see it's decreasing a lot each year in that case.
I'm sorry, is it, is that a cumulative decrease, or is that from this year?
That's year to year. So from 20 to, 19 to 20, it goes down 382, and then it goes down another $500,000 the next year.
So by the end of 2023, down a lot.
Yeah.
Well, by 2021, down a million bucks.
Yeah, it goes from 23 million down to 21 and a half million. So my earnings are just as they used to be, so. So now, as what Tim was talking about earlier, we came through and we started coming up with some assumptions to put in here. And we talked about a lot of those assumptions, like the salary increase in insurance and so on and so forth. What we did is, the first thing we did is we tried to figure out what the base scenario is and make everything flat. And even with the flat, with no assumptions in there, we're still looking at a $49,000 shortfall out there, even with nothing going into it. But then we started putting, playing around with this and came up with some assumptions. So this is just in the first year only. So increasing the salaries by two and a half and two percent would cost an extra $338,000. That's including the extra cost for the FICA and the WRS. That would get your cumulative shortfall up to 387,000. Tim talked about the other insurance adjustments too. Now, that would cost an additional $133,000, gets you up to 520,000. The utilities and transportation adds an extra 50,000 to it. And finally, Tim had talked about the remodeling up there, add an extra $601,000 to get us at 1.171 million dollar shortfall. That's a dramatic factor. Good news, this is the last slide. So this is just an overall look at the 10 fund, what the shortfall looks like for the next five years based off of these assumptions that we put in here. And of course, every year, you redo this and you make all sorts of tweaks, and every year, you look at this, and it just looks like such blue and blue. But every year, you're making the adjustments, and it changes the base, and numbers seem to narrow down until you do this again next year, and it looks like doing a blue for the next nine years. So as we go through and work on this a bit more, the cumulative shortfall ends up decreasing on this, but this is just the way we are starting out to see, to see where it's at. So that is the end of the PowerPoint presentation.
Three slides back, you had these big declines going for three years, that one. And then the fifth year, it's just 75,000, why is it?
Well, where there's probably the five-year enrollment projection isn't as bad.
We had a couple of big classes yet going through the high school. One of those, we don't want to get that bigger hit, and then we level off a little bit.
There you go. Well, and also in that last year, it looks like there is a drop on there also. And with the declining enrollment, you're not adding any money to the revenue limit, revenue limit formula, you also get the whole harmless on there, which bumps up your revenue limit by a bit. So we could look at this too and try to determine if the whole harmless amount jumped up there too, or if it was the, was the enrollment for the large class size.
Yeah, I feel like our current, we have a couple of classes that are right around the 200 mark, but eventually, it depends, I have the vouchers, but you know, I think we'll end up in our high school classes, we're having about 140, 150, some of those lower elementary, we get 25,000 of them that come in from the school fields when we get high school, we're on the 170, 175, plus or minus, I need to say that, but we have a couple bigger classes right now. And you know, an unknown will happen with vouchers.
And you were showing us a negative in the fund balance there, if we just continue on. Kim, I mean, I've heard of districts that go negative in their fund balance.
If there's a plus, every district in the state, they run a five-year forecast like this, they're going to see a major decrease in their fund balance. The only way they wouldn't have a negative is if they're sitting at a very, very high fund balance percentage right now, which a lot of districts aren't. So almost every district ends up seeing a very large negative number in there. Basically, what that tells us is that the amount of funding that's coming into schools can't keep pace with the amount of expenses that, yeah, or you know, pay the teachers more to keep the lights on, to pay vouchers.
Pay for vouchers.
And everything else like that. So that, it is all, I remember the first time I saw that too, and I was in Queens, and I'm like, that's a hundred million dollar budget. And goodness, what have you, we're 28% fund balance.
But can we go negative? Because we're short-term borrowing when we spend the money in fund balance, can we just short-term borrow more and have a negative number?
Well, you'd probably end up with a bad credit rating, I'm guessing. I think there's, a financial advisor would probably say it's not a good, a good choice to do, but it could because it's a short-term.
But districts do it, right?
I don't know of any districts that end up the year at negative fund balance. The last district I was in did short-term borrowing a couple of times a year, maybe three times a year, and it's because our cash was low. There was a fund balance out there, a little bit of a percent, but there was also, you know, fund balance isn't the same as cash in the bank. So, so yeah, I guess it's, I guess it's possible, but it's probably not.
That's a viable.
If I went to it at home, I would stay to do it.
Anybody else who had a question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Tim, it sort of looks like you got your work cut out for you.
I'm back in January, February. Here's the help.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, thank you. Always nice to hear some cheerful news at Christmas.
Thank you.
Hey, where's the school?
I Googled that this morning. I was trying to figure out what to wear.
Is that soft, the news that you're delivering?
Unfortunately, it didn't.
That's right, thank you. Next up, we have the AGR report from West Elementary. Mr. Newfeld, come on down.
I love the comments, good news. Listen, I apologize, I've got a message at 9:00 AM this morning. And I apologize, the last, not the last meeting, maybe, the previous meeting, I was supposed to be there, I got tied up with our new PTO. So I did share a, two things with the board. I don't know if you guys still have access, I'm assuming you still have access with it. The first thing that I shared was the state AGR performance objectives and school board reporting template. What we are doing in, at West Elementary for K3, we are now using our class size reduction in kindergarten, and we're also using instructional coaching and one-on-one tutoring in our kindergarten class. Why we chose to do that, space. So we lost our 4-5 split, had to create another classroom. I didn't feel, I didn't feel strong about putting classes out in our, what they used to call the ref center. So right now, out in our double Y, so we've got our library on the east side, and we've got our art room slash music, and it's not being used for art, on the west side. Okay? And then for the rest of our first and second and third grade, we're using our one-on-one tutoring and instructional coaching. All right? I have been there for, this is, I've been there for a year and a couple of months. Reality is, we know what our scores are, and I truly believe that we are doing some good things at West, and I'm hoping to see some results. The second document that I shared with you, on the top, is our Ames Web Scores for our kindergarten, our first grade, our second grade, and our third grade. As you can tell, right now, our urgency right now.
I don't think we have that in there.
I'm doing AGR, it's working.
West Elementary AGR 2017-18.
We don't have the scores.
Yeah, unfortunately, Jeff, all we have is just the.
Yes, common verbiage. I just shared it with you guys. It is called West Elementary AGR 2017-2018.
Or email it to us.
Actually, it's there.
Jeff, did you share with me?
I apologize, you're not present in school board.
No, they're.
Sorry, got to go. Okay. So as you go through right now, our kindergarten scores are relatively good. Right now, in kindergarten, with our two teachers team teaching, it's worked out very well. We've got 30 kids in the original kindergarten classroom at West Elementary, it is full. But you know what? We've got two teachers that complement each other very well. I do have one kindergarten teacher, and for the past, I don't know how many years, this kindergarten teacher was a 4K teacher, became a 5K teacher, and in reality, with the change through education, Common Core pushing the curriculum down, he is still teaching it the old way. And right now, this year, we are keeping him accountable, and you know what, good things are happening. Unfortunately, and I wasn't there in the past, I've got a feeling that he is a old-school kindergarten teacher. He likes to play, likes to let the kids have fun, things like that. But I think for the first time towards the second semester last year and this year, we are keeping him accountable on what he is teaching, and we are showing very good things in kindergarten. Okay? Unfortunately, kindergarten is not going to improve our state report, since they don't do any of the state assessments. Our first grade is down, our second grade and third grade are our urgency grades. Second and third, they are low. And why is it urgency? Because right now, our third graders will be taking our state assessments for the first time, so we are trying to push in. The difficult thing about it is, we do have some students that are so low that it's difficult. And you know what, it's not, it's not the students' fault, it's just the fact of consistency in their lives, in schools, in getting to school, that has been a concern. But we are trying. So we've got all our eggs in one basket during our wind time in second and third grade to try to improve that. And when we go down to, go down below our scores, does anybody have any questions on our scores? As you can tell, kindergarten, we do the early literacy and early numeracy, same with first grade and kindergarten. In the early literacy, all we are doing at the beginning of the year is asking them the names of their letters. So that is, that is it. Come semester, they will do the sounds, okay? And some of them are ready for the phonetic awareness. So what we have going on right now, we've got a new look at West. Number one, our 4-5 split. I was there one year for a 4-5 split. You know what, a wonderful concept, however, West Elementary, a city school with 228 kids, you know what, low achieving, probably not the best case scenario. So you know what, that was one thing that I taught last year with Ryan, was getting rid of our 4-5 split. So now, we have two fifth grades and two fourth grades, and it's beneficial. Not only did we get that, but we also got a wonderful teacher out of the DL as well. We, I think we have our wind time going on. as well. Um, we, I think we have our wind time going on throughout the district, nine, ten to ten-ten. Um, but as I said, all of, all of our eggs are going into grade two and grade three. Technology. I came into West Elementary my first day as a principal, and we had a computer lab full of dinosaurs. And we had thirty-five Chromebooks for two-hundred-and-twenty-eight students last year. Third grade took their state assessments on Chromebooks. That was their first time on Chromebooks ever to take the state assessment. We have invested in technology. Um, and we have got a going on K through, K through five right now. Our iPads are making in K and one, and two and up. Um, two uses iPads, also Chromebooks, and, um, three, four, five is using Chromebooks. Um, that's a skill in itself. So, you know what? As a principal coming in, um, looking towards the future, um, I guess that was a pretty poor planning on, on our part. But to try and share thirty-five Chromebooks with, you know, three, four, five, um, you know, probably about a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-five students, it was, it was difficult. So, we do have technology now in our building that works. Um, thank you from the technology department for updating our, uh, internet, um, Wi-Fi there. Um, also with the technology, we are also using it. Um, we've got our reading A to Z, which we are offering professional development throughout the district right now. Um, previously, I'm gonna be honest with you, A to Z, most computer programs were probably used during our daily buy-in in the elementary as a time filler. And right now, I'm asking my teachers to sit down bi-weekly and look at the data that they are collecting from these, um, from the, from these programs that we have. In fact, we just caught a third grader somehow or another, got online, got all the answers. It was a program that he downloaded onto his Chromebook, and he could type any key that he wanted, and it would give him the correct answer. So, for about six weeks, we were celebrating the success of this, this little guy, because he was zooming through it while we found out that there is something out there. Uh, technology department has found it. Um, took it off. I've had some good conversations with mom, um, that we're working on. Um, you know, but hey, you don't want to use something by the eight-year-old just teaching. Okay?
Hey, Jeff, I, I was kinda curious. You know, um, how does, you know, I know you work and interact well with the other administrators. How do, how do your scores and your general, like, kind of levels with these, these grades compared to, like, North, which I know is another school that's strong? I guess I'm just curious about how that is as a comparison.
Patrick, right now, I guess, you know what? I probably should sit down and compare them, but it doesn't give us a solution at West Elementary. I, I, I mean, apples and oranges.
Well, I mean, I just heard you saying that, you know, it's a city school, there's a lot of kids that aren't learning well. And I guess I'm just curious if, if there are differences between North and West, and what those are perhaps.
You know what? I, I'm, I'm looking at, and, and I'm gonna give you a ballpark, um, because I don't have it exactly. I bet you we probably have about forty students with IEPs right now. I, probably, um, and that's looking at probably about twenty-five percent of our, our, our population, or a little bit less. Um, and that is, that is non-speechual unusual. Those are IEPs. Um, we've got.
Doesn't North have, I thought North has a, do they not have?
They have about twenty-seven right now, twenty-five with IEPs. But we also are gonna be taking a look at that gap data the first week of January. Um, I'll be sitting down with CISA and I to really look into our special data. It's really hard to make judgments about it, because I don't know, I, I'm not looking at this.
I was just curious, yeah.
But I think we need to be careful about, you know, that yet.
And, and, and to tell you the truth, Patrick, I could come up with a million excuses. You know what? Truth of the matter is, in the last probably five years, West Elementary has lost hundreds of years of experience in teaching. Um, we have new faces up and down the hallway, um, some younger teachers and experienced teachers. Um, and the truth of the matter is, is, is we are in urgency at West Elementary. I don't have reasons why, but I can tell you reasons why not. But those are just excuses, Patrick. Question is, is that, you know what, over the last, I would guess, three or four years, um, this has been happening. And now, now we as a district, myself, my staff, are faced with it. And we need to do something.
If I can answer your question, the, the, um, North had about seventeen and a half percent students with disability on the last state report card. And West has twenty-four point one percent. So, um, you know, I, I didn't make some staff happy when I made the comparison of North and West to say they are similar demographics and our outcomes are different. But I do think to some degree, we did, from what I'm understanding, we lost a lot of history in one school. I think that's what we're doing a lot now, is building the capacity. Uh, but, but I, I did the comparison with the staff, not to shame one school over the other, but to say, if it's possible in this setting, it's possible in this setting. And now the onus is on us to do all of the things that we are doing with our literacy training and with our, um, behavior planning that we're doing with PBI. So, I think we're on the right track to support that school. And I would expect, uh, that our schools all have similar outcomes. As we go down, I think we're being very intentional about making sure that every staff member at every grade level in every school has the same training, so that when we become reconsolidated elementary schools that have demographics that look even more alike, we are prepared to have student learning outcomes be comparable across those schools.
I didn't, I wasn't aware that you had drawn that comparison.
I had. Some people weren't thrilled with me for doing it, but I did it more of, we don't want to use outside excuses, because we are seeing success in one school. Let's find what's working. Let's, let's not have pockets of excellence, make it systems of excellence across the district.
Let's see, you can pull up the report. I forgot, I think you could.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's always you with the first questions.
Sorry, man.
Remember, no questions. Um, right now, um, you know what? If DPI came in and, and, yeah, I would be in trouble. But here's the deal, I just talked about our, our scores, our instructional staff right now, and the reason why we are low is universal instruction. Um, we are, right now, we are pushing in with our AGR teacher, one of them, Renee Smith. We're also pushing in, um, to help instruction, universal instruction with our two reading resource, our titles. Um, one of them is sitting behind me right now. Um, I think that we have gotten very fortunate, um, to, um, get our replacement in reading resource. Um, Donna Crager and Cindy, they work very well together. Um, and, um, they are, they are drivers. Um, you know, when people talk about losing a prep or something like that, I follow these ladies around, and they don't get that. I, I mean, it is non-stop. Um, what else are we doing at West right now? Needless to say, through the district, we are using wind time. Um, I'm pushing and pushing and pushing, Common Planning Time, um, also PLC, twice a week, they get to meet each, um, grade level band. Um, they will meet with our reading resource, our HGR teacher, Renee Smith. Um, those are built around specials. They also have an additional team meeting, supported by me. What I do is, they have another half hour, twenty-five minutes outside. And what I do is, I take both classes and I do a character add, um, little lesson with them. Um, it's been difficult lately with all meetings and things like that. Um, it, but it's something to create more time for these people to talk, to learn from each other, to open their eyes, to ask those difficult questions. I mean, nobody in, in any profession wants to know, I don't know that. But you know what? We are having those conversations right now. Um, so, uh, our instructional walkthroughs, West Elementary were the first ones. I've got nothing to hide. Um, our CISA representative, uh, Casey Ratzinger, um, and our two coaches, Alyssa and Jamie, we have walked through every classroom. Um, we have met with them. Um, you know, we're, we're all trying to be consistent and on that same page. Um, and looking to get district coaches involved with universal instruction as well. Because right now, I'm stealing from Peter to Kate Wall, I'm stealing, uh, res, uh, resource time, resource time. Um, I'm sure Cindy, please close your ears. Um, you know what? I'm using my AGR as a kind of a push-in model as well. Um, we have got three strong, um, classroom instruction people with Donna and Cindy and me. Um, and I feel that we have brought into the direction that we are going. Um, you know what? In fact, um, our PD right now is not keeping up with our wants. Okay? Um, we're going with a balanced literacy approach right now. We've done our word work, things like that. While they were doing their word work, my teachers were like, okay, um, Rita Loves, we want that, we want that now. Um, and I believe we have just kind of started with Rita Loves for our balanced literacy. Down below, we've got our, um, weekly schedule. We have got a point-five FTE AGR, um, one-on-one tutor. Her name is Sarah Jaberlin. Um, she is scheduled here until eleven oh five, but needless to say, she's there a lot later than that. She's always willing to work in our bookrooms, things like that. And as you go down to the bottom, um, the very colorful one, that's Renee Smith. Um, that's our other AGR classroom, or excuse me, yeah, our AGR one-on-one tutor that I'm also using as well as a push-in on universal instruction. For the first quarter, I tell you what, it wasn't taken well by some of my teachers. Um, you know what? Some of the support that we need in our school right now, um, you know, it's the, you know, some of us, we do have students, social, emotional problems, things like that. But our teachers want to be pure all for it and exclude twenty-three students, want to try and save this one. And right now, you know what? Not that I'm not saying our social, emotional is not, not important, and we are busting our butt on it right now. But our thing is instruction. We're trying to regain the minutes that we're losing lining up after recess, going down for a bathroom break. Um, you know, you got five minutes in your classroom, what am I going to do? Okay, Common Complaint, and I did it when I was in, in the classroom as well. We don't have time for social studies and science. Well, if I look back on my day and see, you know what, three minutes here was wasted, four minutes there, two minutes there, yeah, I could get my social studies in. You just need to hold yourself accountable to the schedule and to tap down on paper. Um, I, I, we are using other data than just our aims. Um, I just got an email from Renee or AGR. Um, we have got, um, kindergarten starts with a twenty-five word list. Um, we have got seven kindergartners who are already on a first grade word list. Um, and we do have, we've got one non-verbal, um, actually two non-verbal that are sitting down at the bottom right now. Um, but they're still being worked with, just as much as any other student. But for the first time in kindergarten right now, we are actually sending homework home that's being brought back with ink on the paper. Parents are actually sitting down and reading with them. Um, and that is huge. That is huge. So, we do try our best to celebrate any little thing that we have right now. But you know what? We still deal with classroom readers. We still deal with, um, things that tend to take away instruction time. We are still struggling with that.
Thank you.
Any questions, Jeffrey?
Steve, Patrick?
You guys take your time, and I apologize for listening.
Jeff, I guess I got one question.
Thank you.
So, this is different than Crestwood, because those were, were those smaller? Like, they were typically only seven kids per grade, or five? But is that because, is, it just a different type of, we're using the money differently?
Do you mean when Kelly did her report, do you wanna respond to that, Kelly?
Sure. So, with AGR, it's your type, your targeted group of students. So, when Jeff is analyzing his data, he would have to determine his target group based off of his data and his building. So, when I analyzed my data at Crestwood and East, our goal was to close that achievement gap with our subgroups. And so, I specifically pulled those students out and made a graph for you to analyze. Um, so I'm not exactly sure.
Okay. So, this is, but this is, so the target group is bigger.
I'm not sure what his target group is. I don't have the data that you're looking at.
If you look below and well below, yeah. When it's fifty percent or more, yeah.
So, at Crestwood, we're still analyzing with our SLO, um, our student learning objective, our school goal hits every single student. So, we analyze the students who are at or above and the students who are below. So, um, it's just not the AGR report that I have given you. So, we're still looking at all of the students. Our AGR target group is going to do those subgroups and closing the gaps. So, when you look at your, our school report cards, you look at gap data on there, those are the specific subgroups that we're targeting, because of our analysis, those are the kids that, um, we're not growing from the same trajectory, trajectory as students, um, in the subgroup with the same.
Kind of the regular ed or non-low socioeconomic years.
Anybody else? Jeffrey, thank you. Hope you feel better. Moving right along, folks. We'll go to section six, born action. First one up is item eight, policy review. Looking for motion, please.
I will the board approve policies six, seven, one, point two, expects reimbursement at three forty-six, voting searches.
Second. Motion by Dr. Deeps, thank you, by Dr. Deeps. Discussion. This is the second being the motion, um, because the student searches one is actually, um, policy four, four, six, and then three, four, six, as, as the motion. I think you've all had an opportunity to review them. Basically, it's just, uh, upgrading, um, characterization and read on the policies is just, the policies were upgraded, changed. Any question on those? Hearing that, all those in favor? Very good. All those opposed. Real shit, Gary. Those policies will be changed, and, uh, you can get those online. Item B, curriculum proposal.
I'm gonna have Tom take it through and talk to you, um, about these classes, which we do support. If you're asking what, what I would say to you is that Tom has in his recommendations, FTE recommendations, from the ask you to approve it as, um, us reviewing our current staffing to try to do it as no increase, as you just saw in your budget projection. It's a grim picture. You know, we have a couple of challenges that we're contending with. You know, we lost fifty-nine kids, but they didn't all come from one school or one grade level. So, you can't necessarily just decrease your staffing. You also really can't afford to keep as many staff. So, we'll be challenged with that until we get more efficient in the consolidation piece. But if we lose another fifty-nine kids this year, which hopefully don't, we don't, hopefully, you know, people know we're turning the district around and, and having been a good path. Um, but it's something we have to evaluate down the road. So, as we go through the budget process and our staffing, we'll bring you back staffing proposals. So, at this point, I would ask you, recommend, or I would recommend and ask you that you would approve the, the courses, but not the increases in personnel until we can get you more current information to act on. Want to talk about those, Tom?
Sure. The personal finance proposal, we have that as a course. Um, we met with, um, Dr. Tim and Cindy and talked about, uh, the potential of, um, adding personal finance as a.
adding personal finance as a graduation requirement. What might that take for looking at what we currently offer? And is there FTE there to support that course? So, it's probably more for information that that proposal was put together. But it may be something that, if it's required, we have to respond to and include it in our course offerings. We do currently have the class, it's taught through our marketing program. We also have economics that teaches similar content or concepts. I'm just going to go through and just kind of summarize the other three. Med Terminology was proposed by our family consumer science teacher. It is tied to, it would be a dual-credit course, and connected to course requirements that students would be completing at the technical college level for a health-related field. So, it would be an additional added value to students that take the course, having the opportunity to earn the dual credit. And, so, she is proposing that the Horticulture Management Course is a, an extension of the Horticulture Class. This type of course has been an independent study for a small number of students. She would like to offer it as a course. And I believe also plans to align it for dual credit with a soils class offered through NTC. And the AP US Government, Mr. Blood prepared, and in cooperation with Mr. Dukach, and offering the AP Government Class, US Government, and possible alternating with current events.
So, say they get one semester, US Government, one semester current events?
So, we would work that out as we normally do, as students go through their course selections. We get those tallies, and then we sit down and we determine, you know, we need so many sections of this, so many sections of that, we can offer this course, or maybe we alternate it. We offer it one year, and then don't offer it the next year. So, it is, as Dr. Tim said, we would work to offer these classes within our current FTE assignment at the high school.
Tom, I know there was talk at the legislative level about making that personal finance a requirement, but where is that at right now? It's not a requirement?
I don't know, I looked up, I tried to find the statute on that, but I couldn't see where it actually said, you know, a date that is going to be required, a school year or...
And we have a requirement right now to be including information for our students before they graduate. And my understanding is it's a little bit hit or miss right now in the high school if the kids take those courses or not. So, it is our interest to make sure we meet that statutory obligation. And it's a good class for kids to take. We have the opportunity for our students to earn 32 credits, but we require 24. So, adding another half-credit in my mind is good. When you look at the number of kids that are sitting in study hall, we have plenty of opportunities for students that they could be learning. So, I think it's a, it's a good service to provide our students, it meets the state obligation. So, maybe they, and I was just going to look up two and see what the status of that is, I didn't pay close attention to it.
So, are we going to add that as a requirement for our district, even if it's not a state requirement?
We're looking at adding the classes, because you're supposed to have that content exposure anyway, so it should be tucked in somewhere. We're talking about 2010 having to be a class for incoming kids that they would have to take that by the time they graduate, as 24 and a half credits instead of 24.
Mr. Blood, what's the difference between US AP US History content and Civics Government?
The AP US Government Class specifically, it covers several factors, it looks at, I grabbed my actual paper, but we're, we'll be looking at a number of things. Tom, did you get that? Yeah, thank you. I thought we could be able to copy that. The content that it covers, okay. So, we have constitutional underpinnings of US Government, political beliefs and behaviors, political parties, interest groups, national media, institutions of national government, Congress presence, hierarchy, public policy. So, it covers all of those things specifically.
More so than a narrative.
Exactly.
That sounds more fun.
You're right. It's got a historical background to it, so the first part is historical background, so we constitution. We follow the Advanced Placement Guidelines, which is where those come from. And again, taking the test at the end of the year, you can have the college credits, the college credits to AP. And on Mr. Mary's daughter, I offered the class for several years, offered the class. It was a tutorial after school for students. I think one of the first groups, Mr. Mary's, one of his daughters was in it and took the test, and then passed the test. So, to be honest, I think I had maybe seven kids take it, every student stayed there and passed it as a tutorial. But those are very high-interest students, so that's very helpful. But the class, it fits well within that, it also gives more background, students more background for their AP US History, which is a six-credit course, would give them a better chance to pass in that as well. So, it meshes very well with that class.
But does that mean that when it says it rotates with AP European History, that you offered it, you would not offer the AP European History for a whole year?
Right, the AP Europe would happen as, the way I would envision this, because the FTE required it, and FTE and knowing where it would analyze, is that we would offer those two classes kind of every other year. So, one year you could take AP US Gulf Current Events, the other year you could take the AP Europe. So, we'd be rotating those, giving the student, if they plan out well, they could take both as they come through, so they'd have opportunities to take both classes during their high school career if they wanted to. So, we'd keep them, rotate them, keep our FTEs in the evaluation. So, that's college degree.
Isn't that called more bank for your buck?
I would hope so.
I do think that the importance of offering those dual-credit classes is important. We just talked about it in our Academic Career Planning Committee meeting this week, and one of the high school counselors was saying that when families call to inquire about our high school, they'll ask how many credits we offer that are dual-credit. So, it's, it's a good service to provide kids. I think it helps them to develop a direction for their future. They leave with a chunk of that college debt out of the way, that time out of the way. You know, we talk a lot about the staggering college debt, and how much time it takes kids to go through college, and I think both of those can be helped by doing these kinds of things. And it takes a lot of kids that maybe didn't think they could go to college and give them an avenue because they get a foundation here. So, I'm excited to see our staff create those opportunities, very excited to see that.
I had a question about medical terminology. I know NTC, for example, offers online medical terminology course. I mean, do we, like, I know that students will sometimes ask for a class, you know, we do that waiver for classes that students will ask to sign up for outside of the school. Is that, can they do that as well for something like medical terminology online at NTC?
They could, they could.
Is there, you know, and that strikes me as a sort, I know there was an, I know we're not talking about FTEs on it, there was an FTE proposal. Is that something like, how do we, how are we leveraging like our partnerships with NTC?
Yeah, we just had a nice meeting with them the other day, and we're having some good conversation, I think, about things that we're going to grow with them. One of the things that we did review is what happened with our business program, where I think it went largely online. And that was a struggle for kids. I mean, you have to be pretty self-disciplined to do an all-online class. Some kids can do that, not every kid can do that. So, we're actually looking at how do we grow those opportunities, but so that the kids would either see a person via technology, or, you know, other neighboring districts that we can send kids to for a class under the partial approval that they can send kids to us for classes that they don't offer, so that we're maximizing the opportunities. So, so we've had conversation with the Techno Club specifically, and they have kind of facilitated, I think, a couple of meetings with area school districts to talk about how do we all share our resources? And so, I think that's, that's one of the things I would want us to be careful of, is how much we would encourage kids to do online, because that isn't quite the right setting for every kid.
I generally agree. And though medical terminology courses, I mean, it's almost assumed it's for...
A little more straightforward, yeah. I think some of it just may be the self-discipline even of, you know, yeah, of actually doing the work, where the content might be straightforward enough. You still have to do your homework and set up that time to devote to the class. So, but certainly, I think, you know, my interest would be, we grow every opportunity. If it's a kid that needs it, we find it and we provide it.
But then there is an added cost to the student for the medical terminology.
Yes, and right now, and I don't know if you want to talk about that, Tom, but this is up in the air a little bit, even about all of the dual-credit classes, so the Techno Club has had some conversation with us of what they're working on on their end. As the state has shifted more of that burden to the public schools, which will, you know, quite honestly, cause public schools to put limit on those potentially, at a time when we're promoting the growing of those. But I, I think there's some work happening in Madison to relook at what's happening with the four-year universities, so that, otherwise, they're recommending public schools would put a cap, like, of 18 college credits that kids could earn when they're in the setting. If you think right now, our kids could earn a year of college credit, but... I don't know if you want to comment on that cost for other time?
The question was the cost, like a tuition cost?
Well, I think for the medical terminology, there's a book cost of $100 to the student, which is not a responsibility of the school.
Right. No, if you're looking at charging students for books, if I could be...
Reading the Slavina?
Tom, I think what Dr. Deeps is looking at is the fiscal impact portion of the statement where the person who has written this up, he's got $2,000 for equipment and the materials, the student workbook, $100 per student, full cost of school.
We will either pool our building dollars to purchase textbooks, or often, we're working with Cindy or Tim if it is something that is going to be something that we can't completely cover and kind of pitch in and take for those books. But she's probably asking the typical textbook, brand new textbook, probably costs about $100.
You know, and if they do the youth options, we're going to end up paying for it anyway.
Any other questions on this?
Colleen, Colleen, did you find the piece on the financial literacy?
I did not.
This is new, because it wasn't on the DPI website last week, but there is the latest news tidbit on it, and it says Act 94, signed on November 30th, requires school districts to adopt academic standards for financial literacy and incorporate instruction into the curriculum in grades kindergarten to 12. The act was published on December 1st, and therefore became effective on December 2nd. So, it doesn't sound like the personal finance course is a requirement for graduation, but that we have to adopt standards for personal finance literacy and incorporate it through all the grades.
Yeah, and there's really good work that can happen at the middle school. You know, we look at doing a middle school portfolio through the Academic Career Planning, there is really good curriculum out there to use with middle school students. And I haven't seen what people are using at the elementary level, that'll be a piece I'll have to take a look at.
Didn't we used to have some kind of partnership with Copage, where we had, I think it was the Old Doc Credit Union at the middle school?
Yes.
Is that still operating?
That's where my checking account is. Which explains...
Especially since it's twelve. But you know what, that's, often those financial institutions are really good partners in providing that. I know that they supported the work in my last setting as well. So, those are very good partners to have on board.
So, who are, with this, are these courses going to be implemented in the upcoming year, or are we looking at?
They would be ready for next year.
For 1890?
For 1890.
Because you already have it up and running, right? You already have it up and running, it would be expanding.
I thought the question was these proposals would be ready for next year.
Correct.
But you have that class up and running, I'm saying you don't have to create that.
Personal Finance, yes.
All righty, well, we did put the cart in front of the horse on this one.
Okay. I will the board approve the following course proposals, personal finance course proposal, medical terminology, horticulture management, and AP US Government.
Second. Hey, the motion from Dr. Deeps, second from Dr. McKenna. Have we hashed this one over now?
Yes.
All those in favor? All right. Those opposed? Motion carries. We have some new courses. I don't see early graduation.
No, oh, it doesn't open.
Tom, you're going to probably have to read these off, because the file that we've got, nobody seems to be able to open, so do we have those names? Where's it?
Malformed.
Malformed. And it's nothing worse than a malformed file.
Was it approved at the committee of the whole, or is it?
Yeah, if you could just give us some names, please, so that we kind of know.
Or do you have an document that you can share now?
Nobody, there's a committee about it.
I think it got corrupted.
Yeah, unfortunately, the transfer didn't make it across.
Resend it, and you can skip an item and go back to that, and then I can get it up there for you.
If you can pull it up, yeah, okay, then we'll jump, thanks, buddy. All right, then we'll come back to item C, and we will be looking at item D, the RBA Annual Commitment Reason. Looks pretty straightforward, just the RBA asking us to agree to remain in the RBA consortium for the duration of the 2018-19 school year. Yeah, I think we'd be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Dr. Dean, I should move on. Dr. Deeps and Dr. McKenna, first and second. Any discussion on this, or is everybody pretty clear?
Colleen, do you like this?
Um, the RBA? You know, to be honest, I want to have a review of the RBA and of the aims. So, it's funny that you asked me that question, because, so I think we, I recommend that we do this. But I want us to go back and look at what is the spirit of both of those programs? And how are students enrolling in those? So, enrolling in those should not be an escape from attendance requirements, rule, expectations, academic expectations. So, if you look at aims, I think that was intended to capture a group that wanted to do homeschooling. And I would be interested to see what our achievement looks like for our students that are in there. I have a 30,000-foot view, to be completely honest. But I am not convinced that that's the right fit for every student, and I'm not convinced that those two settings are serving well every student who is in them.
These count on our report cards, right?
The aims count in our report card, we were just talking about that, and RBA would count in Medford's report card.
You know, I, I, to be honest, that's a little confusing to me, because as part of the consortium, those are our students.
So, then they would be in our report card. They get our diploma, they graduate, so then they would be ours. So, so what do we have, 70 in one and 30 in the other, I'll say. So, you look at 100 students, and if those achievement scores are great, and you look at our report card, you know, those are in there. So, so I've asked Colleen that something that I want to look at, and Cindy to carve out specifically what is the achievement for the kids that are in there. And, you know, I'm not 100% comfortable how students pass in and out mid-year. I would prefer it's, or thought, so. Especially the aims is the one I would want to look at first. And, I mean, I think if we're going to offer something for kids, we have a ethical responsibility to make sure it's something that we believe is quality and prepares them to be successful.
and prepares them to be successful after. I can't say that they're not right now, but I also can't tell you that I think with certainty that they are and I want to look at that. That's kind of a long answer to your question. But both of those are kind of a concern to me.
We have a meeting in February where their principal is coming to the district to meet with us.
Well, because they're always advertising on the radio, right, comparing against students, just like, it's a thing you're competing against essentially. But like you always say, if you get some funding, if they, like, if we could not partner with them, would any of those students not be able to sign up to rural or rural academy?
You could open and roll on. Yeah, and that one I have to learn, RBA, I have to learn more about. It might have a little more substance, I'm not sure, than AIMS, AIMS is a little loose.
And I do, I agree with you, I echo that sentiment. I mean, just from a general, I mean, and it's anecdotal, but I mean, you know, I see students that are struggling and they'll tell me, oh yeah, I'm not going to go to school anymore, I'm going to be at home, you know, doing my learning at home. And I know, you know, and I know them collectively, like as families and I hope they're successful, but I have concerns about that success in some cases and so I think it's very reasonable, valid.
Which, so the AIMS kids, AIMS is K-12, right, or one twelve? Which school do those students get rolled into at the elementary level?
Is it their homeschool?
Their homeschool by residence.
Homeschool by residence, okay.
So we'll be working on that, bringing you some more information.
So then at this time, we will be looking for a motion to remain as part of that?
Yep.
And it's based on the recommendation? Then we'll be looking for that motion, please, to, you know. We did that. See, but McKenna, okay, good, because I'm ahead of myself, thank you guys. All those in favor? Aye. As opposed? Motion carries. Bobby, you get that other thing up yet?
Right now.
Alrighty, we're working, then we'll go down to item E. Voucher transparency. I will throw this out, this is one that was brought to my attention and I asked to have this on this evening's agenda. I believe that the voucher system, for all intents and purposes, as we know it, is not going away, but the lack of transparency in that program bothers me a lot and bothers a whole lot of other people across the state. Going to be very honest with you, and this is a very similar resolution, other than changing a couple of words that Merrell has passed and other districts have passed. And it's just to get our government more responsible and to get them to put a little more transparency in how the voucher program works and make it transparent to the taxpayers, where the voucher money is coming from, where it's being pulled out of districts, where it's being pulled out of public education. So I'm pushing and asking that we pass this resolution this evening so that it can be forwarded on to the state of Wisconsin.
So do you send it to our state representatives and senators to go talk or go sign on to that assembly bill in the Senate bill? What's going on? What's the status of those things right now, do we have any updates?
We can send it to, you know, our legislators that represent us as well as sending it on to the governor's office. And, you know, it might say a lot of school districts are doing this and it's really going to what we had talked about when Tim brought his information about what we were going to have to levy for our voucher schools. And in follow-up conversations that we have had with that, it's been very interesting where people say, well, Colleen, I've always had to pay for, you know, public schools and so what's the difference if people pay for private schools? And my counterpoint to that is, at least when you got your tax bill, you knew what you were paying for, right? And now when you get your tax bill, you don't know what you're paying for. You don't know unless someone tells you and so the heart of this is to bring that transparency. And I think this is sort of a growing movement right now. So I don't know, Tim, if you have anything to add in terms of attraction that it might have at this point?
I really don't have anything anymore.
It's early.
Were you, like, kind of like all of us except for the one, two, three, the fourth paragraph? Is it the, I guess I just don't know enough about it to know in my heart if these things are true, not bound by the same instructional standards, open meeting laws, special education inclusion, not governed by courts, no public accountability for the use of taxpayers? Like, I would say, I vote for this for sure if we erase that paragraph, but I just don't know if you could tell me a little bit about that.
Those are all true. So if you look at, if you look at our school in town that's taking that as part of that program, I mean, they're not, they're not a public entity, so they don't have any of the open meetings laws that apply. You look at, you know, you were talking about the difference between our elementary schools and their demographics. If you look at the demographics, you know, that's one of the beautiful things about our public schools. We take every single kid in. All you had to do is go look at our music concerts that have happened in the last couple of weeks. How fabulous it is to see every kid of every ability, color, you know, size, shape, whatever, on those risers participating. So that's beauty, we take everybody that walks in our doors, they don't have to take them beyond the enrollment desk. So all of these things are true, the instructional standards, they're not bound by the public core. And there isn't public accountability, there's no report card for them. So those are all.
They don't have to do a report card.
Nope. And realistically, those are part of the big reasons why I feel so strongly about this. And the one that irks me the most is the fact that public schools are required to take everybody. Private schools aren't. And they can turn away kids and they can turn away kids for all their own reasons. And a public school can't do that. And yet, private school is not, you know, the same level of accountability that a public school is. And that's, that's the biggest reason I feel so strongly about this.
So is this, a voucher school is different than a charter school? A charter school would be part of our district technically?
No.
Yeah, so a charter school is different from the voucher schools, right? And like a charter school has a board. So it is different than the voucher schools that are really kind of independent operators.
So can you get a voucher to go to a charter school?
I know the answer to that, can a charter school apply to be a voucher school, Tim? Because a charter.
Yeah, a charter school, a charter school has to be chartered through a public school.
You know, they could be a private charter.
Well, they can be a private charter.
Do you think so?
Wisconsin normally is extranatality charters, which is extranatality of the school.
Tim's thinking about that.
Well, I'm trying to think of what an R two charter is and I'll get back to it. The Department of Public Instruction says charter schools are public schools, yeah, so I don't think.
But they would take the voucher dollars. Yeah, so, and my fear is that the vouchers, because of that, that they don't have to take everybody, is going to create schools of haves and have nots. So your haves are going to go to the schools that will take you and have nots will be in our settings and will serve them super well. But then you're going to, you're going to put those first grade scores, which they don't, you know, if you look at, you know, there's private school in Bree May that will, will tell their ACT score compared to public schools at ninety-eight percent or something, it's going to, you know, four-year college, it's a different demographic. So even when they do compare their outcomes. It's not apples to apples. It's like comparing some of our elementary schools right now, it's not apples to apples in summer, you know.
So we'd be looking for a motion. Oh, I mean, I need to adopt this resolution.
Only you put member behind my name.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Only you put member behind.
Then we'll, then we'll be done. That was, that was a typographical error. We will have that corrected. We won't get that fixed, that is, that is a minor. So let's, let's circle away against that. Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries, resolution passes.
Now it's ready.
You know, it's ready, okay, let's jump back up to early graduation. And I assume you've got that list there, alright, thank you. I'll be looking for a motion then to approve the early graduation. And we got her, okay. Do you want to share to make that motion? We actually should read off the names, I think.
Yeah, I do have a little question on the RBA student and the AIMS student. Civic exam, is that not a requirement for the last two students on the list?
That's a very good question.
And then for the AIMS student, it says no paperwork received, I don't think I'd vote for that.
Tim, do you want to respond to this?
The RBA student received their diploma from RBA.
So that RBA does not have to offer a civics exam?
I thought that was. We're checking this transcript, it should be in there. And then the AIMS student has applied, but just as it states, has not submitted any, has verbally requested, but did not submit any paperwork.
And Tom shared with me and within a day I reached out to their parent and spoke to them and they said that the student told several teachers that they wanted to graduate early and I said, there's a process, please get ahold of me and myself or Mr. Zanzel can help you through that process and I have not heard back. But I did some investigating and I do not have any paperwork or grace for two years on that student.
If we were to delete those two from the motion at this time and they did submit all the paperwork and get that going, can we bring them back in at a later date for the application?
I thought the RBA student has paperwork.
The RBA student does.
Checking on the civics exam.
So the only way you'd be concerned about is the AIMS student. He does not have a physics exam, or civics exam.
Is it just not noted on the transcript or, or you know for sure that he doesn't have, has not met that requirement?
It's not, it is not noted on his transcript at this time. So I can touch base with RBA to see if it's their requirement or not. It is there, it's okay.
That being the case, we'd probably look at those first eight students at this time and we'll table the other two until later date.
And Bram is on the certificate pathway and it does not say that for the certificate pathway, per the AIMS Academy handbook, that they have to take it past the civics test.
Right, but I'm talking about the paperwork, it says what paperwork are we talking about? If they have not submitted the paperwork.
So there's no paperwork submitted to either of us about graduating and you know they have not taken that to be taken? So I think it's appropriate to take that.
Yeah, let's, I think we will look at the, if you would, if you want to go with the first creep names there? That are listed, yeah. Alrighty. Okay, motion for Mr. Pride, second, Ms. Youska, to approve the early graduation of the following. Molly Priest, Dakota Colpak, Whitney Marshall, Rihanna Nix, Dylan Cease, Michaela Teal, Karen Hager, Zachary Zestowaniak?
Estonia.
Okay, I was close. There you go. Any further discussion on those? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty, that puts us back down to, let him have it. The two in offer to purchase. What you all got for us? Oh. Well, yeah, we've been at this for a while and I'm just.
I asked for this to put on because I was under the impression that, you know, we had somewhat of a deadline here and the email we sent kind of indicated that they don't want to abide by a deadline.
Deadline is going to be this coming Friday and they indicated to us that they need more time than that, that they won't make that deadline.
Will you send us the, I'd just be interested in plants and get our lawyer's thing that he wrote out?
Did you just want an update on it or?
If there's a deadline, maybe we should move past the deadline and decide to do something else. I mean, I feel bad that they can't meet the deadline, but maybe we should open it up for sale more broadly. I'm just, hey, I'm just putting it out, maybe no one else thinks that, but.
Well, one of the things Tim and I talked about is we could, we could update you again in January and at that time, if you wanted to proceed with the assessment, is that, appraisal? I mean, that would be an option maybe in January. What do you think about that, putting it back on the visit in January and considering that as an option?
It could be, you know, we're offering to him for a buck here. We could have offered it to somebody else for a negative ten thousand dollars and be further ahead at this point. I mean.
It's true.
That was part of the discussion we had last fall when Jake was here is saying, the longer you hold it, the more it's costing.
But you're also trying to make some references and community outreach, that also has some value in it.
Well, that has value and, you know, but we can go the other way too. That if they, if they're saying, well, this doesn't quite meet our needs, we can say, well, if we demoed half the building so you don't have to have the whole building and that would be reasonable, right, Tim, to demo part of that building off?
I mean.
No, part of the building is newer than the rest and it has its own heating system in that part.
The heating system is all tied together, but you could isolate it.
Could isolate it. And so, you know, I'm just saying, I think we ought to have a plan of where we're going here as opposed to having them dictate where we're on.
Should we give them another, I'm sorry, month's time and say this is, you know, and if you don't do something by this date, then we're.
Well, how long did it take our lawyer to get the document to them? You know, when do we actually, like, did we just give it to him a week ago or is it been like?
I have it up here right now. Ended in November, November twenty-eighth, it looks like that he had sent that to us to review and so on. So they had, probably just shy of a month to act on it, right?
So they've had shy of a month.
Well, they, they wanted the offer to purchase for their board meeting and I believe their board, you know, and I'm, this is off the top of my head, but I think the board meeting was scheduled for December eleventh. So we, they also asked for a maintenance history of major expenditures over the last ten years and they wanted a utility history for as far back as we had it. And we gave them utilities, probably about a fifteen-year history on utilities. And we provided that prior to their, this, their December meeting.
So we haven't heard anything that occurred at their meeting?
They, the clerk treasurer sent us, the village clerk treasurer sent us a notice saying that they weren't going to meet the deadline and they had sent the offer to purchase to their attorney for review and then they wanted to schedule the time to inspect the building.
So we've actually given them a relatively short time.
They have, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I'd probably just wait until the next board meeting. If they don't hear from them, I guess we'll have it at the back of plan.
So we'll bring this up back together in January and put it on the agenda for the January meeting?
Yeah, we heard on December thirteenth, the papers were sent to our attorney to be looked over before any decisions are made. We want to inspect the building and the papers are ready to be deadline, the polls will not be met, they don't want to be rushed into any decisions.
That makes sense.
I think we bring it back in January, just make sure we keep on top of that. Can I take a little break?
Well, since I've been having someone in my hearing over here, yes. Let's take, let's take five and we give the students a chance to get out of here too, because you've got school tomorrow. Alrighty, let's, let's bring things. Let's, let's bring things back into session and we'll go on to item G, which is the new hires. And be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the following new hires. Ben Luden's second, school nutrition secretary begins December 7th, 2017. Jamie Crossen, PT dishwasher server, beginning on December 7th, 2017. And Michael Perisic, tech head, beginning on December 8th, 2017. Are you willing to sign it?
No.
Thank you.
We have motion from Dr. McKenna, second, from Ms. Youska, on the new hires. You've all probably had the opportunity to review them, any questions?
Mike is, he worked at the tech school for a period of time. He's a great find.
Yeah, I think you are very, very excited, yeah.
Yes.
I heard people complaining when they let him go, so...
I think it's good that the tech, the tech school...
Since this involves Bezos, Bobby will call tech school here.
Noel Deep?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Youshta?
Yes.
Katie Schrader?
Yes.
Jess Kamid?
Yes.
Candy Mary?
Yes.
Mike Bolick?
Yes.
Okay, so we have those three new hires, we thank them for coming on. One thing on item H, resignations, be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board accept the termination of Jamie Arrowhead effective December 14th, 2017.
Okay, motion from Dr. McKenna, second, from Ms. Me. I think we kind of know all the data on this one, then we can go on. Any, any further discussion on this resignation? Bobby, let's do a call again, please.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Danielle Youshta?
Yes.
Katie Schrader?
Yes.
Jess Kamid?
Yes.
Candy Mary?
Yes.
Noel Deep?
Yes.
And Mike Bolick?
Yes.
Adam I, donations.
I move the board accept the following donations, $1,000 from Carl's Transcorp for PHS gymnastics, $1,000, $10,947 from Community Health Foundation for healthy kids, bright kids, $500 from Community Health Foundation for healthy kids, bright kids, $750 from Hydrate Sweeney for Spring Valley 5th Grade Field Trip, $400 from Hydrate Sweeney for HS Band, and $338 and 66 cents from ZS and North, which went for the FFP. Total donations, $14,135 dollars and 66 cents.
Second. Motion from Dr. Leeb, second, from Mr. Piot. Any, excuse me, any discussion on the donations? Always Hydrate Sweeney, they don't donate any all the time, I appreciate that.
Actuant.
What's that?
It's an Actuant company. They're part of Actuant.
I don't know what that is either.
Probably a larger corporation with paper pockets and they want to do some good community service and therefore by donating to the schools, it makes them look good for the board of directors.
Well, but actually, there's a lot of local people though that involved in making decisions on that.
So we appreciate it, so.
I just want to get in here on the Spring Valley 5th Grade Field Trip. It would be nice that, knowing that we're going to consolidate schools down the road, that this would be a good item to start on, to have these schools cooperate and...
I think that's been suggested, we'll have to revisit that more.
I think you suggested it before.
I think we suggested it too, so...
Where do they go, I mean, Mall of America or something, is it?
Yeah.
No, museum.
Yeah, it's a museum.
They go to the aquarium, the aquarium or something, Mall of America?
It's in the...
They do it in overnight state?
Yeah, it's in, it's a museum, but it's in the mall.
It's in the mall, is it? Okay, anyway.
Yeah, they sleep there on the floor overnight and stuff.
I think, you know, if you think about the kids who are at North in general, they need that trip more than the kids at Spring Valley because their parents aren't going to do it for them.
Okay, any other question or comments on the donations? I think we can roll our voice on this one. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank God. We appreciate each and every one of them as usual and we thank, once again, all those community members for their support. We would be now going to item seven, moving to closed session. So we are looking for consideration of motion to adjourn to the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.854MC considering employment performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically regarding administrative...